Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the reorganization of the West Milford Board of Education for the year 2020. Would everyone like to join me for the flag salute?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, The Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Township Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, Board Attorney, and Cablevision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolutions were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all district schools. At this time, I would like to read the results of the election, board election, which took place on November the 5th. Jason Stillman, 2,043 votes. Michael Conklin Jr., 1,799 votes. Courtney Stevenson, 1,657 votes. Robert Woodyer, 1,645 votes. William Seidowitz, 1,520 votes. Stephen Drew, 1,465 votes. Write-ins, we had 31. The oath of office will now be administered by the Board Attorney, Mr. Andrew Brown.
We're gonna do that up front.
Yes. You could either put everybody together.
I think we agreed to do it everybody together, so why don't we all get out front so you can get your questions in.
Oh, yeah, that's a good spot.
The camera's over the back, so this is over the camera.
Go in the center.
Go in the center. So, this is my first time doing this here, too, so it'll be exciting for all of us.
You need to stand in front of me.
So, they go like, ready? Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will bear true faith in the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Let's see if we can do this next one. Don't forget to say your name this time. I.
I.
Courtney Stevenson. Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I'm not disqualified as a voter.
And that I'm not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of crime or offense.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Stop it and turn it in.
At this time, I would like to, if any of the new board members would like to make any remarks at this moment, would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to thank my wife and my kids for their support, and I thank everybody for the votes.
Mr. Conker.
Thank my wife Jill, my son Sean, for all the continued love and support through this. Thank the community for giving me the opportunity to work on this board and looking forward to it. It's good. Thank you.
I have something prepared. I'd like to thank my family as well, my husband for supporting me and my children. I'd also like to really thank Rob Woodyer. He could not be more gracious and more gentlemanly-like towards me, and I'd like to encourage him to run again. I think his insights and knowledge would very much benefit our board. I'm also very appreciative toward the West Milford voters. This election really showed that every vote counted. It's so important to vote and to get out and vote, to become educated and to talk to one another, and more importantly, to listen to one another. I appreciate everyone who did vote and who took the time to fill out absentee ballots, and I hope to meet all the voters' expectations and look forward to working professionally and respectfully with this board.
Good job. At this time, I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Ochsinski.
Here.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Greenough.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Okay, now, I would like to take nominations for the office of Board President. Does anyone have a nomination? Mrs. Dwyer. I would like to nominate Linda Van Dyke as Board President.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, do we need a vote?
You should. Or it's someone making a motion to apply affirmation, but you have a motion to close nominations and then a vote.
Motion to close nominations. Move to close nominations for Board President. Second.
I'll vote on that.
Vote on the close of nominations. Aye. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? For Mrs. Van Dyke, Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski.
Yes.
And I will gladly turn over the gavel. I'd just like to thank everybody. I look forward to working with the new board. I look forward to developing a good relationship and that we can work together on many new projects that are ahead of us. McAppin, one of them. I think this board is pretty much on the same page educationally and that we all want the same thing. We want to move West Milford forward educationally. So, I thank you. At this time, I'm opening the floor up for nominations for Vice President. Nicole?
I would like to nominate Terry Donner.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for Vice President? If not, I need a motion to close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nomination for Vice President.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Roll call. Mrs. Robinson. Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I look forward again to working with Mrs. Van Dyke as President, and I look forward to working with all the board members. We have some challenges to face this year, but we will face them strongly and we will persevere. So, onward, West Milford Board.
I do have one quick amendment to the agenda before we move on. On page 23, we have a typo on page 23, education number one. The board determination for incident report M2 is going to be unsubstantiated, not substantiated, and we could do that in executive session.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as laid out before you.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as with the one change of her being unsubstantiated.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Before we move forward into the agenda itself, I wanted to put it out to the board. If you'd like to use this as a consent agenda, we can move all the resolutions at one time. If anybody has any questions on any of the resolutions, otherwise, we can move each, instead of going individually, we can move them all forward. No discussion? I think it'll save a lot of time. Yeah, well, it's really like a house, basically. Everything is basically stayed the same. The only change that really is part of the reorganization is the time change. We're going to 7 o'clock instead of 7:30. So, just call for...
Do you want a public comment on that, too? Since you're gonna move the whole agenda?
Would anybody in the public like to comment on the resolution?
Okay, then, if you would move...
So, I need a motion to move the whole agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
And we need a second? Any discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco? Are there any questions? No, there were no questions. Okay. After things, no. Everybody's good? Yeah, I did ask. And this is just on the reorganization? It's all the resolutions.
It's 1 through, it's number 13, I assume. Because 14 is, and 15 is personal student affairs.
You know what? I'll read it out. It's gonna be resolutions 1 through 14. 13. 13?
Actually, it's 1 through 12.
1 through 12.
1 through 12, I'm sorry. On number 13 on the agenda.
Number 13 on the agenda. Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski.
Yes.
Okay, now, one thing here. The team charter has to be signed. We've just passed it under the resolution, so I'll pass it around and everyone can sign in their spot where they need to sign. So, we're gonna, item one under education is going to be, we need executive session for that. So, let's move on to the ethics presentation.
Wait, yeah, some personal student affairs.
Right over there.
Do we need to, we don't need to do anything with that?
Oh, I need to do public comments. I'm inexperienced here, so. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the Chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals in speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged. The board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific, students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected and identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment? I make a motion to close public comment?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Personnel. Mrs. Fritz.
I would like to move items 1 through 3 under personals from the election.
Second.
Any discussion? I see George Wine, he's been with us a long time. Yeah, he will be missed, but he's a real, everybody knows him and hates him, and I wish him well. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, Mrs. Robinson. Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Operations and finance. Did you want to do that one, Dave?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to move items 1 through...
2.
1 and 2.
Second. Any discussion? These are all the solar project, this is putting it up uneasy. Yes, they have to be submitted to the Department of Education. Any other discussion? If not, roll call. Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Ochsinski.
Yes.
And under education. That will move after executive session. Now, Mrs. Hallowa for our ethics presentation.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's great to be back here. Congratulations to the new board members. I have some materials if you want to... Thank you.
Here, take that one. No, here.
I see that extra. I'll take one. You want to see that extra? I took grace.
Thank you very much.
Sure, can't hurt if you have a backup. You can have a backup on.
We're gonna be on TV, yes.
Now, I have been to West Milford before as your field service representative, which I'm very happy I still am. My name is Kathleen Hallowa, and I work for the New Jersey School Boards Association, which is a, you're all members, all school board members in the state of New Jersey are members of our association, and we are not, we don't have any authority. We are a support organization. We exist to help you do your job better and to make sure that you get the mandatory training that the law requires. So, I am a resource for you. I'm pleased to help you. Whenever you have a question about governance or boardsmanship, give me a call, and part of my job is I get to come into West Milford and deliver some really nice, you know, sessions and discussions with the board, and this one may seem a little bit dry, but I am very conversational, so if you have questions, by all means, interrupt me, talk, I want to make sure that you all understand this, but if something kind of, you miss something or you need a little clarification, give me a call tomorrow, anytime, I'm happy to help. In your folder, if you open this up, we are streamlining the packets, so it's a little thinner than you may have seen before, but we do have a full copy of the PowerPoint, which is very useful, and on the left side, this acknowledgement of, if you could sign that and get it on over to Barbara, she will have a record that the board took its, you know, did its annual discussion of the code of ethics in that. And on the back of that is the total, which is also on your agenda, which is extremely excellent, and we'll also be going through it very closely through our presentation. All right, so we'll start. So, the Ethics Act is a piece of legislation, right, that was enacted back in April 1992, and it's really, all that it's about, honestly, at the bottom line, is to make sure that you maintain the trust and the confidence of the people who put you here, your stakeholders, right? And it's the same set of rules for every school district in New Jersey. It is the law, from Montague to Cape May and everything in between, so we're all on the same level playing field, which is a good thing. You would hope that the word ethics would be very black and white, but it is kind of gray in some areas, you know? New board members, I gave you a copy of the full Ethics Act, you know, our experienced board members have seen this many times before, and it's there in all its legalese, but we'll go through it and we'll kind of, you know, just kind of flesh out what that actually really means, because it's important that you understand it, not only to be sure that you're not in violation of the act itself, but that if you look on the bottom of that slide, those last two words that are in red, you have to make sure that you do not create a justifiable impression to the public that their trust is being violated. And if it is proven that you have created that justifiable impression, then, you know, technically, you are in violation of the School Ethics Act, regardless of your intention. There was actually a case very recently where a board member felt he was acting in good faith, and, you know, I'm sure he was, but, you know, he created that justifiable impression that he was acting outside of the parameters of the School Ethics Act, and he got an ethics violation. So, we don't want that for anybody, and that's why I am grateful for the invitation. Thank you very much for having me.
Well, thank you for coming. That's a good meeting for it.
Oh, good, good, good. So, in any case, whom does the School Ethics Act apply to? All school board members in the state. It also applies to charter school trustees and to certain certificated administrators. Not the Code of Ethics, but the Ethics Act itself. The Code of Ethics is for school board members only, and that's what you just signed and passed on over to Barbara. But basically, it's some specific standards that you have to adhere to and also what the penalties are for violating, that the mechanism that you use for violating, which we'll talk about. It's also worth noting that compliance with the Ethics Act is part of your CUSAC, right? CUSAC, you're, the instrument by which you are deemed to be an effective school district or not by the state of New Jersey. There's a whole bunch of indicators. You'll become more familiar with this as new board members, as you gain your... And the board is responsible for that. So, what you need to make sure is that you do your training, that the board has its annual discussion of the Code of Ethics, and is demonstrated in the board meeting, meeting minutes, which it will be after tonight. And also, if one member is found in violation of the Ethics Act, you get a violation, then it hurts you on your CUSAC, believe it or not. You're not, you're gonna go down some points, so, which is interesting, because the Code of Ethics of the Ethics Act does not apply to boards of education, to the actual body. It applies to each individual. I find it very interesting that if one individual misbehaves, then the whole team has to make the difference, which is not exactly fair, and it's not just the whole team, it's the whole district, because, and I see your superintendent rightly non... For one person, bring it down. And I know, I'm sure that that won't happen, but that's just part of my spiel when I do Talk about a little bit more what conflicts are, and also, the fact that board members have to fill out disclosure statements. I see some nods. That came to you from Trenton electronically. Make sure you fill that in if you haven't already. And also, what your training requirements are as board members, because in New Jersey, school board members are required to take the same mandated training as you go through your years of service. It's not every year, but newly elected board members do need to take new board member orientation in year one of your first term. It does behoove you to take that as quickly as possible, because some of the things that are covered in there, well, actually, namely, the process by which you review your chief school administrator needs to be done within six months of you taking office. If you do not, then the board takes... And it's like six points, six or seven points. That's a big, that's a big chunk. So, you know, look into taking your... NJSA, and there are two methods by which you can do it. You can do it in person or you can do it online. If you take the online training and do it in person, that's perfectly fine and absolutely encouraged. There's a new board member orientation weekend, very immersive. We have one in February, we have one in March, free of charge to you in the district, and you get everything, including tickets. It's a great on...
It's a wonderful training.
Yeah, thank you, and I think it's wonderful. I went through it myself as a new board member, and I was thrilled by it. And look where it got me. But if you can't afford the whole weekend, we do have one-day trainings, and we have, you know, different opportunities throughout the year for you attending. You definitely need to do that before six months of having taken office, and if you don't take it before the end of the year, you will get changed by the Ethics Commission. We'll talk about that a little later. But in your... You'll also take some mandated governance training. It'll be shorter. In Governance 2, we focus on budgeting and school district finance. In Year 3, we focus on student achievement, and those need to be taken by the 31st of the year. Again, you can do the in-person, you can do the online. We don't have a whole weekend for that, though. But the final module of required training that you need to know about is what we call Governance 4, which is taken each year that you are reelected. So, if you serve, of course, Years 1, 2, and 3 of your first term, you decide you love this, and you are reelected, you take Gov. 4 at next year, and then you have two years off. If you are reelected, you take Gov. 4 again, and again, by the 31st of December, and then you are put. Also, you do need to understand the harassment, intimidation, and bullying policies of your school district and the procedures for that, and that's really only required once. So, the initial training is in Governance 1, and we follow up with Governance 4 if there's any kind of updates, which you'll see in your school board notes. Any questions about that stuff? If you do, just let us know. We're happy to help. School Ethics Commission is the body that was established by the Ethics Act that holds you accountable. you accountable members to making sure that you follow the Act itself. It is an all-volunteer body. It meets once a month in Trenton when they can get a quorum. And the members are appointed by the governor. These are the people that decide whether or not your behavior is in line with the Code of Ethics and the School Ethics Act. And the membership comprises, when it's fully staffed, when the governor has appointed as many people to serve it, that doesn't always happen. You have two people who are active school board members, serving on the Ethics Commission, two people who are active school administrators, superintendents, that sort of thing, and five people who do not have anything to do with serving on a board or working in a school, five non-school officials. So right away, you can kind of tell that when the commission is going to be looking at whether or not you violated the Ethics Act, they're not- members' ops, right? They'll be looking at it, and the majority of the membership will be looking at it through members of, you know, John Q. Public's ops, that sort of thing. So that's kind of something interesting to know. It's not always fully staffed, but as a matter of fact, right now, we have a vacancy in the school board member slot. So if you want to serve, let me know, and I'll pass word on to our executive director and in his next conversation with the governor. You never know what might happen, right? So how do they do their job? Well, they do that by means of two methods. They issue advisory opinions, and they hear ethics complaints. Two very different animals. And we'll start with the advisory opinions. The advisory opinions are behavior that you're considering as an individual, or a fellow board member, a school official considering, or something that you're engaged in currently, and you're just not sure. Because like I said, that word "ethics," it's kind of gray sometimes. You're really not sure whether you're conflicted, or whether-
...
in line with the Ethics Act. Then you can write for an advisory opinion. And it's nothing fancy, it's not any kind of form or- Ethics Commission before their monthly meeting. And you explain the activity, and you explain why you're questioning that it might not be a good idea for you to continue, or for your fellow board member to continue, and ask for an advisory opinion. At their next meeting, they will hear it, they'll make a decision, and they will send you that decision. And it's on the Department of Education's website, have the instructions and the address on how to do that. But you can only ask for an advisory opinion about either yourself or someone that you're serving with on this board. So if you, you know, if you, your friend is, or someone you know, is serving on the, I don't know, West Orange Board of Education, or the, you know, Cedar Grove Board of Education, or this or that, you cannot ask for an advisory opinion about that person. When you can ask for an advisory opinion-
...
work with on your own board of education, you just have to let the commission know and prove that you've, you know, notified that person that you're asking. Everything's fine, or no, you really need to change your ways, that's not, that's not good, and the reason why it's not good. And there's never anything punitive about it. There's never any kind of penalty. It's just a yes, keep doing it, or no, stop doing it, and the commission trusts that you will cease. And, interestingly enough, these opinions are often published on the Department of Education's website. The School Ethics Commission has its own section, and they publish certain advisory opinions. They need to vote on it. Six people on the commission need to say, yes, this is okay, this is something that would be of use for other school board members to know about. And then when they put it on the website, you'll see it's all scrubbed out. You don't know what district is asking, or what person. They kind of sanitize it, so you don't really know. But it's a good source of advice. And when board members call us and ask, you know, is this something I can do or not, we often rely on them-
...
should become familiar with their website, actually. It's pretty interesting. Because also on that website are the ethics complaints that the commission uses. And they are a very different animal. Because ethics complaints are about activities that have occurred already. Okay, when the horse has left the barn, as I already say, and it's made someone pretty angry, that's when they start filing the ethics complaints, and they certainly can do that. An ethics complaint can be filed by anyone. Doesn't have to be a school official or a board member, doesn't have to be someone from West Milford, doesn't even have to be someone from New Jersey. Could be someone who's just reading the papers from out of state and thinks that's awful, and they would like to file an ethics complaint against you. That is absolutely allowed. So, yeah, it could be anybody. So we really, these are, these are ones that you really, really want to avoid. And these things, if you are, well, we'll talk a little bit later about the penalties, but let me address this slide first. Only one advisory opinion came out in 2019. So we worked it into our presentation for this year. And this has to do with a board member who was elected, but their job was to, you know, to drive the school bus for a private contractor that did work in the district. Which was, you know, yeah, right? You can see why someone would ask for an advisory opinion on that. Because this school board member, or a school board member-elect, would be driving around district children, right? They may need to write a discipline report, they'll be interacting with parents, they'll be interacting with staff to a certain degree, but, and that's not something that a school, that's within a school board member's purview. However, it is their livelihood, they don't work for the district, they work for a private company. So it's gray, right? It's gray. And the SEC concluded that it was okay for the member to continue doing such a thing. Because after reading what their duties were, and what would be expected of them as a bus driver, even of a school route for that particular district, it would just be, you know, temporary contact with students. So they can stay on it, but the opinion, I believe, did say, you know what, if you have an opportunity to get another route, you probably want to do that, in different words, that's what they said. And the member needed to abstain from any kind of vote that had to deal with the busing and the bus company, any kind of discussions like that. So, but otherwise, he could stay on. But it's interesting, right? Linda, I mean, you probably would have thought that that would be a conflict, right? So it's, it's worth writing for these. They're never, they don't cost you anything, they're never punitive, they're kind of interesting, and you just want to make sure that you, God forbid, it turns into an ethics complaint later, right? So when you have those ethics complaints, I mentioned that they do have some penalties that come with them. And here they are, in ascending order of importance, right? A reprimand is where you've done something wrong, and you just pretty much get a letter from the Commissioner of Education saying, that was bad. So it's kind of between you and him. A censure is a step up. That's where there's a resolute notice that needs to be read at the board table by the board president that- And a suspension is even worse, of course. The SEC can recommend that a school board member be kicked off the board for a certain amount of time. The commissioner decides whether or not that is, you know, is appropriate, and that's also a formal resolution and press for a lot of newspaper articles about you. And removal is the most extreme. If you have a very severe violation, you can be kicked off the school board, so you don't like that. If there's any appeals, they're held by the penalty. So with all that being said, I know it's been talking a lot, any questions about any of that stuff? It's kind of cotton dry. Emphasis on dry. So let's go through the Code of Ethics, right? So within the School Ethics Act is a special portion just for school board members. And this actually came out of work that the New Jersey-
...
quite some time ago. Going back to the '70s, I believe, it was kind of optional, but advocacy made it mandatory. So, I know it's a little, I know it's a little trippy, but I am really getting tired of hearing my own voice. If you wouldn't mind reading subsection A, Mike O'Phee. This is big time here, you're at the dais, so we have it on. If you can't read there, all you need to do is read a, this guy, A, right here.
I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to the school's desired changes shall be brought out only through legal and ethical procedures.
Excellent, thank you very much. Well done, well done. Nice loud voice, and we can hear that and understand, this one's, this one's pretty easy, you know? Basically, if it's, if it's the law, you have to follow it. You know, as a school board member, you-
...
contrary to what our legislature instructs us to do, what the State Board of Education instructs us to do, any kind of court order you-
...
You know, but what's also kind of interesting there is that second sentence, desired changes shall be brought about only through legal- The bottom part of all of these slides, I'm not going to read, but if you wanted to prove that someone was in violation of these particular tenants, that's what you'd have to do. I should note that the Ethics Commission is not an investigatory body. You're not going to be able to file a complaint that says, I heard this, or it is understood that, or there is a report that you need to prove the violation occurred, and they will determine whether or not that's a valid proof, and whether or not that is a violation or not. So you're not, they're not going to be sending investigators or this or that. As it goes through the courts, you, you know, each party will need to get a lawyer, and there may be, you know, testimony taken, but they're not going to investigate these things the way, you know, let's say the police will, if someone breaks into your house. So subsection B is one of my very favorites. David, would you mind reading that one?
Sure. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children-
...
in public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Perfect, thank you. And the reason why this one is my favorite is because this is really what being a board member is all about, right? It's as simple and as difficult as that. Most important word in this one is one of the smallest words, "all," right? You're working for all children. Now, to be found in violation of D, it's actually kind of difficult, because you would have to prove that a decision was willfully made contrary to the educational welfare of children. That's a little hard. But, you know, just as a touchstone, right, just as a baseline, you have to keep that three-letter word "all" in mind, and let it inform every decision that you make. And a lot of times, people are put on their board, their school board, for everyone, as a desire to-
...
history of advocating for a certain segment of the school community, right? Whether it's for gifted and talented children, or special needs children, or, you know, any kind of, you know, or even your own kid's school, or your own child's class. And that's very good work, and is not to be disparaged. But as a board member, your role is very, very different. And you need to kind of check that at the door, because you're looking at the welfare of every kid in the district. And there needs, one, one kid's needs don't, it's not more important than another child's needs, whether you know them or not, whether they're in your family or not, whether they're your kid's friend or not, you're talking about the whole children. That one's a big one. That one, no one ever asked me what my favorite is, but that is-
I will confine my board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to write policies and plans only after-
Right. And for such a short sentence, there's a lot to that. I mean, part of it is that last part that always catches every- will be affected by them, right? That's what public commentary is for. That's why you have a chance for people to comment on agenda items before you vote them, right? So that takes care of that, that's pretty good. But the other thing, too, that I want you to keep in mind, is that you need to confine your board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, okay? That's the role of a school board member. That and communication, there's four functions to it. The one that the School Ethics Commission is most concerned about is policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Getting outside of that is beyond the scope of your responsibilities. And you may be in violation of the Ethics Act. Policymaking as a body, that's probably the most important thing that you will all do. So as long as you keep, the things that are before you, if you say, is this policymaking? Is this planning? Is this appraisal? Is this communication? Then you're good. And D is a real important one. You'll- If you don't mind reading this out loud, it's not going to be the last time you say it, I guarantee you.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer-
...
but together with my fellow board members to see that they will run.
That is exactly right. It dovetails so beautifully with C, I'm telling you. And it is really a very important one. You'll hear this all the time if you go to New Jersey School Board Association programs, and I hope you do. We have employed, as school board members, the chief educational officer of the community. That's the person that we pay to run the schools, make sure that everything is going well. If they-
...
lets the board know. If things are going particularly well, we're just a little, lets the board know, informs you with data, keeps you abreast on what kind of progress the district is making on the district goals annually. So you can appraise that. But it's not for us to go into the schools to check up on that firsthand, investigate that sort of thing, initiate something new. That's outside of your purview. That is something for the superintendent, for his administrative team. This one- and they're very passionate about education in general, and their district in particular, right? So they want to help to move the ball forward. That doesn't make you a bad person, that's pretty good. But it's not your role as a board member to try to run the schools. And sometimes we need a little check to say, oh, was I really trying to run the schools? And maybe someone like a third party, like me, or your board attorney, or your, you know, maybe your board president or superintendent can help you see whether or not that is running the schools or not. And that's a big one. There's a lot of people who are slapped with a violation of D, so that's something that you need to kind of keep out of. Other word that's a key phrase, the key one in here, is the word "together." Because no board member has any authority when they step away from this stage. You only have authority, it only exists when you are around the table and you are voting on agenda items. That is it. Other than that, you don't have any more authority than, than me, or than, you know, the person that you see when you're stopped at the traffic light. The power of the board members comes from the actions that they take together with their fellow board members. Now, that being said, most of, if not all, of your constituents do not understand that. They're not sure of what your role is, or, you know, or they're misinformed. Sometimes they don't. But oftentimes, you'll be approached, and you'll be asked to weigh in on something, to solve something, to this or that. And that's, I'm seeing a nice smile, that's good, because that indicates you get it. Yeah, you can't, you can't solve these problems, right? Most of the time, and we'll talk about the change in the board a little bit later, most of the times, it's not even your, the board's purview to solve these problems. But certainly, if there is something that the board can advance or do, they need to do it together. It's not just one member. Good old E as in eagle, another often violated tenant of the Code of Ethics. Linda, do you mind reading that?
I will recognize-
...
with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises, nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
Right. So if you represent yourself as the West Milford Board of Education anywhere, that's not good, okay? If you write a letter to the newspaper, don't identify yourself as a board member who is speaking for herself only and not for the board, you're likely in violation of E. In fact, you're surely in violation. If you go to constitute a group and say, I will make sure that the board does X or Y, that's a violation of E. It's really problematic. Again, it goes back to that whole thing, when does your authority exist? Only when you're voting on particular items. And no one here, among this board or any other board, has any kind of- purr vote counts just as much as anyone else. ...pur vote counts just as much as anyone else's vote here, right? And I know that you get it here, which is really good because sometimes that's a... Anyway, that's a law violation, not good. Sorry, do you mind reading F for me?
Yes. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I don't think I have to waste any time, but all right, thank you. Kate, how's about G? Do you mind reading G for us?
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to schools, which, if disclosed, needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
Thank you. The most important part of this can be summed up in two words, no leaks. No leaks of confidential information. If something is discussed in the executive session, that's where it needs to stay until the need for confidential... Always exists. If your superintendent passes you a memo or sends you an email that says confidential, you need to keep that confidential. The details of each IP investigation, they need to stay confidential. Personnel matters need to stay confidential. It is very... That information kind of gets out. That's the kind of thing that really does damage individuals, so as human beings, we'd like to avoid that in any case, but as school officials, it's really important. So I'll read H. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after the consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. So this is about personnel hire, right? Which are on your agenda often, if not all, most of the time. And I know that board members kind of get a little nervous about those types of motions, but the good news is that you don't have to, because you absolutely have to have the recommendation of your superintendent in order to hire somebody. And your superintendent is the educational leader of your district, so who better to do that, right? And the reason why this is kind of in there is because, let's just imagine that a superintendent's recommendation, and someone says, "You know, my nephew just got out of, my cousin's nephew just got out of a, you know..." ...garden teacher. And everyone says, "That sounds great." Can you imagine? Can't do that because of H, right? Can't do that because of common sense too, but we have it in there for H, just in case anyone wants to... And I is the chain of command. Well, actually, I is a little bit different from that. J is the chain of command, but this kind of plays into it. I is my second favorite, okay? I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. And one of the reasons why it's my second favorite is because as board members, you all have a big, invisible-to-you B-O-E-M tattooed on your forehead that means, "I'm a board member," and people will try to bring you into conversations about their child's coach, their child's teacher, their child's principal, this administrator, X, and Y, and Z, and try to give you... ...want you to do something about it. You can excuse yourself and move to another spot of the cocktail party and say, "I..." ...conversation with you. I am not allowed to have this conversation with you. And you will be very happy for that. Now, that being said, it does require a little bit of finesse to kind of disengage yourself from those conversations, especially when we're talking with constituents who have elected you, who put your sign on their lawn, who's very enthusiastic to have their friend at the table, their neighbor at the table, and they don't quite understand what you do. So that dovetails beautifully into our last subsection, which is J, and this is the chain of command. I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and I will act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. What this means is that if someone has... And you'll hear stories that you won't like, trust me, but they're not yours to solve, like I mentioned earlier. ...child's teacher. You explain, "Well, there's a thing called the chain of command and the Board of Education, not just me, the whole Board..." If it's a yes, then okay, then you advance to the principal if the solution isn't good. After that, if the solution is not to the complainant's liking, then you go up a level, maybe to the director of curriculum, maybe to, depending on what the situation is, could be, I don't know, transportation director, it depends on the situation. And then you work your way up towards the penultimate level, which is a superintendent, right? More than 90% of the time, these sorts of things are solved at that level, if not before, and you will not have to deal with it, which is a good thing, because we really don't run the schools, we don't know about running the schools, we are laypeople. But if there is a failure of an administrative solution, no, not, you know, not in order to... Yes, but if there is no administrative solution, then the person who is so affected can come before the Board and ask you to put on the agenda, because you are the, what we call the best resort, you're the last stop in the chain of command. But when I say "you," understand I mean the Board, okay? Are there any...
...during training, I came to New Jersey School Board where they tell you to tell people, "You don't want to tell me, because if it gets to me, you want me to be able to be informed and make a good judgment in this instance." So that's why you need to use the chain of command. And a lot of times, people, even though they want to tell you their story, they understand that you would have to say, "Then I would have to say, I can't participate in this discussion."
That's a great point.
You know, sometimes it makes them feel a little more at ease that, you know, you're not just blowing them off, like, "Well, you know, I don't care," but that they understand why we do what we do.
Right, and in other words, you can't get involved at the wrong level, because the more involvement you have at the wrong level, is the greater chance that you will need to recuse yourself from any kind of discussion. Thanks for reiterating that. Yeah, that's really, really important. Okay. Ethics violations that relate to what we're talking about here, that are always, it's always fun to get these stories, right? As long as we're not living them. We had a member who took information about a student discipline incident and emailed his immediate family, bless you, about it, because it was interesting. And this language is from the decision. The immediate family then took that and shared it with countless others. Email, social media, you can imagine. So that member was guilty of an ethics violation and that person was censured, even though the person said, "I'm sorry, I know I did wrong." They were very apologetic, they saw that that was just not the right thing to do, and I'm so glad I'm nowhere near their kitchen table when this news broke out. But they need to write over the reprimand and gave that person a censure, so that just kind of shows how serious that is. One was kind of fun. This district is popping up in a number of bullet points where a member approached a subordinate employee of the superintendent's... You ever see yourself as being the superintendent some day here? Do you think that that would be a good fit? We think that would be a good fit for you. What do you think? The superintendent's employee, her contract's not up or anything, so that was an issue. And that person was found guilty of subsections E and I, and they were issued just a reprimand. You know, that's pretty bad. And they violated two tenants, but they just got a reprimand. I'm not sure if it was the same district, but this was an interesting one. Again, the member wasn't too happy with their superintendent and went to a union meeting and told the teachers, "Look, just be patient, we hate the superintendent too, we're doing our best to get rid of her, just hang on. We're trying everything, just be patient, we support you." And believe... ...as having violated the Ethics Act. And yes, he was found guilty of two tenants, D and E. Wanted him off the board for a year, but the commissioner said, "That's a little excessive, you never kick people off for a year, and we're not going to start with this guy, but we'll kick him off for 60 days." So you missed two meetings for that. And, you know, there's a lot of newspaper articles about it. And this one, you may remember because it was televised all over, where a board member was stopped by an uns, by a traffic officer because she was speeding, and he didn't know that she was a school board member and she let him know. It was captured by a dashboard camera and it went all over the news, so now everyone in New Jersey and the New York metropolitan area knows that she's a school board member. And she used inappropriate language, and that turned out to be a violation of the Ethics Act, and she received a 30-day suspension, okay? And the inappropriate language, as problematic as it was, is not really a violation of the Ethics Act. Even though I'm in a car, I'm at the dais, and I'm not sure what traffic has to do with school business, that's where she got it.
I don't know why.
I mean, yeah, I wish people gave us some credit, you know? Yeah, but they don't, and that's okay. And that's okay, really doesn't have anything to do with traffic. And lastly, this was from the same district where the guy was going to the union meeting. This is, I think, a different guy, in fact, it is. Anyway, so he had an auto repair shop, I think, around the corner from the school where his wife was a teacher, he was a board member. And he used to just, you know, walks into the school whenever he wanted to, say hello to everybody, and this and that, and as evidenced by the fellow board member who went to the union meeting, he didn't like the school superintendent too much either. So he was meeting with the school secretary and asking him over and over to, "Please, just, you know, tell everybody, you're being blackmailed by the administration because of this very weird incident. You know, don't..." And so this person really is just a paragon of awful behavior, and he was found... B, D, E, I, and J. So when you read, if you become familiar with the Ethics Commission website, you'll see, like, when people file an ethics complaint, they just row everything to the wall and they see what sticks. And a lot of times, things don't stick. But this one, walls were very sticky. So he was given a censure because by the time that this wended its way through the entire appeals process and all of that, he was ultimately wound up with a censure, he was off the board, he was not reelected. So, kind of interesting stuff. Any questions about any of that stuff? Conflicts of interest, pretty obvious. If you, if there's any kind of business interest that you have that's before the Board, if there's any kind of personal involvement that may seem to create a benefit, any of these things that are laid out in the Ethics Act, you just need to completely recuse yourself and vote from the discussion. You don't need necessarily to resign from the Board, as was evidenced by that... ...part in any aspects of the voter discussion. And what we need to think about when we're talking about conflicts, right, are the definitions of family members, different types. So in that gold bar there, we talk about the immediate family. This is important terminology. It's a spouse or dependent child who resides in the same house as you. That's an immediate family member. But there's a larger definition, a relative. And when we're talking about conflicts, your immediate family member is not your relative. They are two distinct people. We talked about immediate family member, relative is this big wide net. All of these parties, whether they are related to you by blood, marriage, okay, so any of your spouse's relatives this way, or by adoption, any of these people qualify as one of your relatives now. Notice, interestingly enough, even though we have things like stepsister and half-brother and this and that, the aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, cousins is not on there, which is kind of interesting. What does that mean? Well, when hiring duties are before the Board, you cannot hire a relative of a school board member or your chief school administrator unless you get a waiver from the executive county superintendent. Sometimes in remote districts, they really just can't find anybody who's in positions and they are sort of forced to make that hire, and they will get a waiver. Now, if somebody already belongs and works in the district, they've been hired and you were elected, then that's fine, you can stay on the Board, but you can't take part in any kind of, you know, participation in evaluating the superintendent or his contract, or hiring a superintendent, any kind of matters that concern the superintendent, or supervisors that are in the chain of command of it. If there's a question, you ask to the school board attorney to weigh in on it, you can also call us, we're happy to let you know what we think. Talking about collective bargaining with the unions, this is where those definitions come into play as well. This chart, very... Advisory opinion, the School Ethics Commission made it up themselves. If you have an immediate family member who works in the district, you cannot participate in negotiations with that immediate family member's union at all. You can't vote, you can't discuss it. When the Board convenes an executive session, you leave. If you or a member of your immediate family works out of district union, they're a teacher in Montague, right? You cannot participate in negotiations until the final memorandum of agreement is reached, your salary drives, all your compensation packages. Once that's all ready to go, you can cast that final vote, yes or no. But not until then. If you have a relative... ...then you can participate in the entire process, absent another conflict. See that little asterisk there? That means there may be some kind of special circumstance with your relative that may preclude you from having these discussions with the West Milford Board. And typically, that means heightened union involvement, it's the most common one that we see. So if your sister-in-law is the president of her local chapter of the NJEA, then you're likely out of negotiations, right? And that sort of thing. Doctrine of necessity is kind of interesting because if you have a Board where most of the members are conflicted, right, and you can't garner enough votes to pass the contract, then the Board would invoke what's called the doctrine of necessity, where everyone can vote again. And I don't think that's anywhere near the case in West Milford, is it? So...
No, we're good right now.
No, we're okay right now. Right now, okay. Okay, good. Well, you know what? You might not be okay along the lines if you have kids that are graduating from school and looking for, you know, employment elsewhere. If you do need to invoke the doctrine of necessity that's made to the public about who's conflicted and why, and then the Board needs to invoke what's called the doctrine of necessity in order to get its work done. And when I say "work done," I mean vote, I mean vote. I don't mean forming a negotiations committee. And one of the very interesting things about this advisory opinion, A 1917, was there was a Board where one member, only one member was not conflicted, and they were looking to invoke the doctrine of necessity to form their negotiations committee. And the Ethics Commission said, "No, you can't do that, because a committee does not make decisions for the Board. The committee does not..." Isn't that interesting, right? Because we know they do a lot of legwork, right? And that poor unfortunate person's experience, they had to be a one... Another point that I should make too, is that if your superintendent's conflicted, then they cannot, or your business administrator, then they can't help you with negotiations either. They kind of fall on this... They can only serve as a resource for you, they can't participate in your discussions when you're negotiating. So let's do the O two four. So let's do the O true false. Is a relative an immediate family member?
Yes.
Yes? No? No. But in everyday life, they are. But a relative means that big definition, and immediate family member is something different. So when you're, when you're looking at this chart, right, you can determine, right? So can you employ a relative of yourselves or your superintendent?
No.
You're not supposed to. That statement is mostly true. However, you can get a waiver from the executive county superintendent. If the majority of the board members are conflicted, can the doctrine of necessity be invoked for the negotiations committee? Okay. Your attention spans are pretty good. A board member whose wife's aunt is a paraprofessional, listen closely, a board member whose wife's aunt is a paraprofessional- ... evaluating the chief school administrator. Would you say that is a true statement or a false statement?
I'd say true.
True. Say true. Very nice. That's exactly right. Related by blood, marriage, or adoption, in district, right? Okay, so how's about this one? A board member is a teacher, they themselves, a teacher in a neighboring district. So that board member, is this true or false? Can participate in the negotiations process where the teacher's contracted, but they can't-
That's false.
That is a- Nice. Thank you. That's confusing people. And it is kind of confusing because it's completely flipped around exactly. And this one's kind of- The assistant superintendent may not evaluate the principal in the building where her son is a teacher. Is that true or false? That is-
That's true.
Yeah, they can't. Okay. All right. Volunteers, okay? This isn't always a talking point now because a few years ago, you know, it used to be there were no parameters at all, and a lot of people got on the school board because of- But then someone misbehaved, and we can't have nice things anymore. So the Ethics Commission came up with a bunch of really interesting decisions. But the more we get used to them, the more we see the wisdom that we're into actually issuing those mandates, and really think about it. So you're not banned from volunteering in the schools, but you do have to think about what kind of volunteer service you're going to be performing, and if it conflicts with your role as a board member. Generally, for one-time things, you go to, you know, Read Across America Day, or you're a chaperone on a field trip, that's okay. Because it's a one-time thing, you're not really giving directions or anything like that, you're doing something that everybody kind of does. But if you are going to, say, direct the school play, where you're really working intensely with a group of students and with staff and making decisions and this and that, that's too close to subsection D. That's too close to running the schools and not seeing that they are well-run. So the Ethics Commission has determined- Also means that if you're going to be a club advise, right, for West Milford, right? If West Milford wanted to establish a, you know, archaeology club, and your degree's in archaeology, and you also have a teaching background, you'd be a perfect fit. That's not, that's not going to make the Ethics Commission happy. They're going to ask you to choose. So in your packets on this slide, here's just a list of questions that you can ask yourself right before you go in to do your, well, not right before, but sometime before you go in to volunteer in the schools. And if all these answers match up, then you're probably good to go. If not, then you are probably not. There's a link there to the ethics advisory opinions that you'll want to become familiar with. But in any case, when you're planning on volunteering in the schools, let your superintendent know before you. And if necessary- And I know that that's a lot of information, and for a lot of people, that's unexpected. I'm wondering if there's any questions on that. And we come into the end here. We just want to make these points with boards. I don't think you guys do that ea- Board members are very interested in who's being hired, especially for the higher-level positions. But sitting on an interview committee is discouraged. For the reasons that we talked about before, you know, your superintendent is the best qualified person to make those decisions. However, the superintendent is in charge of the hiring process. He or she calls the shots. So if your superintendent really did want to have a board member on an interview committee, which is few and far between, believe me, they would be expected to follow the guidelines that are in the Ethics Commission's advisory opinion of 4-12. And it's kind of like, you can only have one or two people, you can't ask questions, you just have to listen, you can't even am- I mean, it's like, I don't even know why you'd want to do that. But interest, but a lot of verbiage was wasted on that. Well, maybe not wasted, expended on that. But interestingly enough, when the commission was asked about whether a board member could participate in an exit interview, it was a really quick decisive no. It's really something, right? No, 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 no. So somewhere between 2010 and 2015, I got very much. And that's pretty much an overview of the Ethics Act. But you know, there are developments, there are court decisions, there are Ethics Commission decisions, there are, you know, in some cases, there's new legislation. Anything that you need to know to do your job and stay in line with the Ethics Act will be published in School Board News, which you'll be getting regularly as school board members. You'll get an electronic copy and a paper copy in the mail. And basically, you know, before you act, think really hard. Ask for the opinion of your superintendent, your board president, your friendly field service rep, and for an iron, an airtight decision, ironclad, ask for your board committee's opinion. Okay? And we are all here to help you in your role. Because, you know, everybody does their role in the best of their ability, in the roles that are predetermined, that work, that work. We are the finest state in the nation for public health. We all do our parts properly, and our kids move forward. And I'm- Any questions?
Yeah, going back to the, the one that raised the point on around responding to individuals that get out. What have you seen that's successful in other districts about how to get that work out to the community? Because I do think a lot of us face that, and the public gets mad that, you know, I reached out to everyone, and nobody responded. Everyone's like, "Well, you really can't do that." Is it a standard response that we all adopt, that like, whatever, you know, you all respond to somebody, "I find that, do we, do we do nothing?" Is there something publicly that can be shared?
That's a great question. That's a great question. First of all, you should all be able to kind of respond to that and explain, you know, the role of a board member, right, which doesn't work when people are angry and yelling at you sometimes. But also, I have seen, did boards of education put the, like, information on- But at least you can point them in that direction. And there is standardized information out there. We actually do have a really great document, not only one that's just very formal, but we have like a real friendly one called 13 Things Board Members Wish the Public Do About Them. And we, and that's actually archived on our website. You can read it yourself. And I'm happy to send a copy along. Quite a few of my districts have put that article on their website and tweeted it out. It's kind of interesting, right? And it's very friendly. You know, like, "No, we don't have keys to the school," right? "No, we can't call snow days." "Guess what? We don't get paid." You know, all of those things, you know? So it's a, it's a pretty good thing to have. The other thing, too, is that, you know, you should become familiar, which I'm sure you already are, with your bylaws on how the board communicates with the public. Typically, your board president is the spokesperson, and there's a reason for that. Because the president will carry a singular message, the board's message, to the press, to the community, especially, you know, in those real, you know, dicey situations, you know, real complicated situations. Knows you're doing things right with your public commentary language that you mean beforehand. That's excellent. I wish more boards would do that. You know, and you're assuring your public that we are listening to you. But we're in not, don't expect an answer from the dais. It's not generally the right time for it, especially with a complex question. So I think that that's wonderful. And you can even mine that language yourself to, you know, use that to respond to people who are going to approach you. They're not there people. Just go through what you do. So-
I've been putting, like, if I get an email now, rather than not responding at all, I'm sending it back, I'm forwarding it to, to the superintendent, or whoever should get it. And then what I normally do is I just put a, a comment on there to them, "Thank you for sending this. However, I'm passing it on to the superintendent, who is the chairman, who deals with this issue, that it is not a board issue."
That's perfect. And I will tell you, you know- That I've worked with, he's not on the board anymore. He had an auto reply message on his email.
I should do that.
And it was just, okay, no, wasn't that brilliant, right? Just bounced right back at everybody. So it doesn't hurt anybody's feelings either, because you do work with, you do deal with people's feelings. And I don't know if you all have business cards. I know some districts do. I don't know what you would use them for. But on the flip side, it has the chain of command, you know, which is really kind of cool. So those are, are different strategies that you can adopt to nice-
Well, I like the website idea.
Yeah, and you know what? And to get that kind of out on someone, once you put it on the website, just send out a tweet, you know, just so that it doesn't just live in that sterile part of your, of your website. And you know what? It's not a bad time, because January is board member appreciation. Woo! This is where we all feel really appreciated for our services. So it's just, it's just good to know. And actually, quite frankly, board members, even ones who have been on for a while, find that article informative. So, you know, like I said, it's not instinctive. We have the best-trained board members in the country, but there's always something you need to know. And they're- And I commend you all for taking on this role, and for doing it well, and for working together. Because you're serving kids. That is so important. So good for you. Thanks for your attention to this long boring thing. The next time I see you, it'll be more exciting, I promise. But thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, Kathy. We really appreciate it. Yeah, careful. Okay, the next, the next item is all business. Does anybody have any all business? If not, I'm- I'm not that, I'm not that good at picking up on things. If- All those in favor? New business, Dr. Anamou.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our newest members. I look forward to working with you all. Members of the public, that's you, Mrs. Fritz, and whoever else is watching on TV. We have a brief little update tonight. Obviously, you know, in December, the board voted to move the sixth grade to Mackbin School, beginning in September of 2020. So I'll be providing the community with some updates periodically throughout the spring as we get closer to, as we get close to September. So we did meet last Friday with the principals of the elementary schools in Mackbin, as well as the central office staff. We do have a few updates now, and there'll be some more forthcoming. With regard to the transition issues with the now sixth and fifth grade classes moving up, we are going to have a set of four meetings in the spring. There'll be one meeting for a sixth, at night, for sixth grade parents, current sixth grade parents, and another meeting at night for current sixth grade students. And there'll be the same setup for fifth grade parents and fifth grade students. So there'll be four different night meetings. They'll be a little bit different in nature. The parent manager, the curriculum, what to expect with their assessments, the date of the operations of the school. For the student evenings, they're going to take them around the building, show them how to use a locker, where is the gym, where is the lunchroom, so on and so forth, and finish the night off with a, an activity night for just that grade of students. So our Mackbin activity nights now are seven, eight for the whole school. We're going to do an activity night for the sixth graders, and a separate one for the fifth graders, where they can get used to, this is what you can expect at Mackbin next year. And obviously, starting in September, they'll start doing them again, one, one per month, using a Friday. Also, for the board members, we have committee meetings a week from tonight, so I'll be providing the personnel committee with an update as far as staffing issues that we've been looking into for Mackbin. And I know Mr. Novak will be discussing some education issues, curriculum writing, committees, things of that nature, in the Education Committee on, on Tuesday night. So we'll, we'll keep working towards that. All right? Any board members have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? If not? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to the members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and, and/or directly related to the operations of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak to, speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. Then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided, and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and the, and employees that, and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Would anybody like to speak? Oh, come on. I didn't see you sitting there, Pat.
Hi, Tricia Keller from The Messenger, and I have a request that, just before you go into executive session, can I get a picture of all the board members together? And I didn't want you to have to read that whole thing for nothing.
Oh, thank you very much. Need a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Now we need a motion for executive session.
On the 10:07. To move into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, student matters, current litigation matters, special education matters, kids, and matters of attorney-client privilege.
And we will be returning for action after. Yes, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay. So we'll be back. We'll take our picture and then come back.
The wording changed here, huh?
Here.
Mr. Ochensky.
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mr. Conflin.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here. Okay. Mrs. Dwyer. Okay, be, be resolved that the West Milford Board of Education approve issuance of written decisions affirming, rejecting, or modifying the superintendent's determination in the following HIB investigation. Incident number 2020 M-2 unsubstantiated. And we need a second on that?
Second.
And that's a roll, is there any discussion? No. Roll call?
Then you're affirming this, right?
Yes.
All right. So we're not rejecting or modifying it.
Okay. Mrs. Dwyer? Yes. Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Conflin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ochensky?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Good night. Did we change the wording on that?
Which, which the-
Um, on the-